I'm going to call to order the September 11th, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I kindly ask, if you can stand, please do so. The significance of today's date is not lost upon us. It was on this day 22 years ago, the United States endured its most deadly terrorist attack on U.S. soil. Nearly 3,000 people lost their lives tragically. America would never be the same. On that day, we witnessed the worst of humanity, but we also witnessed the best of humanity. As the inferno of hell blazed within the Twin Towers, first responders rushed to the scene and without any regard for their own safety began rescue operations. Ladder after ladder came to the scene. We saw the best of America during that moment and the days that followed. The compassion, empathy, and unity we felt as a nation was real, sincere, and abundant. We prayed for the families of everyone we lost that day. We are eternally grateful for the sacrifice of the first responders and their heroism that inspired a nation. We pray for our own first responders, for their safety and their well-being. We pray for America, that it won't take another tragedy to find our way back to a time of unity and empathy for one another. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have a couple proclamations tonight. We are going to read one of them, which is a proclamation designating September 10th through 16th, 2023 National Assisted Living Week. And I believe we have Danielle Snead here. And I'm going to come down there to this microphone. If you want to meet me there, we can present this proclamation. So this is a proclamation designating September 10th to 16th, 2023 National Assisted Living Week. Whereas residents of assisted living communities are active members of the larger community, offering their knowledge, life experiences, and involvement. Their past contributions continue to be a vital part of Royal Oak's rich history, and their ongoing participation deepens our city's identity. And whereas assisted living is a critical long-term care option for older adults and individuals with disability that fosters choice, dignity, and independence. Assisted living communities are committed to excellence, innovation, and the advancement of person-centered care. Whereas in 1995, the National Center for Assisted Living established National Assisted Living Week to honor the contributions of assisted living communities in providing long-term care to America's seniors and individuals with disabilities. And whereas this year's theme, National Assisted Living Week, is Season of Reflection, highlights the incredible care provided by essential caregivers and the special bonds created in assisted living facilities across the country. And whereas during this special week, assisted living communities across the country are encouraged to organize activities and events which celebrate the dedication to staff, the individuality of residents, and the deep connections formed in these settings. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission do hereby proclaim the Week of September 10th through the 16th, 2023, as Assisted Living Week in Royal Oak, and urge all citizens to virtually visit or call a loved one, family member, or friend residing in any care setting and offer a kind word and spend time participating in various virtual activities to unite those from all walks of life in need of our continuing love and support, and to learn more about how assisted living services benefit our Royal Oak community. My privilege to present this proclamation to you, Miss Snead.
Thank you.
And the microphone is yours if you have any words.
Thank you. I wanted to let you all know that Waltonwood Royal Oak has been a valuable part of the Royal Oak community for many years. We have taken on the challenge of caring for one of the most vulnerable populations in our community, the senior community. This proclamation today acknowledges all of the hard work that our staff puts forth in caring for our senior community, all the way from the housekeeping staff to the caregivers and the administrative staff. And so I wanted to thank you all for acknowledging the hard work and dedication that Waltonwood Royal Oak puts forth to be a part of this community.
Thank you, Ms. Snead, for all your work.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number six, which is approval of the agenda.
Did we remove rail safety?
Um, okay, we can go to number five. I thought I covered that with number four, but there's no one here to receive the rail safety proclamation, so we're not going to read it tonight. So that brings us to item six, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Cole?
Move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cole, a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who pay say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, before we get to public comment, item seven, we have a special guest here tonight with us. Mr. Dave Perush is here, and I'd like to call him first to the podium. I know he has some things to say. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Perush, he is the husband of our late colleague Patricia Perush.
Thank you, Mayor Fournier. My purpose in coming tonight is very simple. It's to thank the community for the support that we, as family members of Pat, received during her final illness and the follow-up service. I want to start by thanking the commission. You made wonderful comments about serving with her. You took action to name a new park on her behalf, or rename a park on her behalf. You all came over and visited with her the day after that. She was able to watch you do the park renaming. She especially enjoyed and appreciated all of you coming and spending time with her, and respecting the fact that at that point she was beginning to really fail. So you let her go on a positive note. And then you all came and participated in the memorial, so thank you for that. I want to thank the Royal Oak Symphony Orchestra and John McLaughlin-Williams. Rosso, of course, performed both before the service and as people were leaving. John did a solo performance of the theme from Schindler's List, which, if you think about it, is wonderful, good, coming from a horrible situation. John played that and played it wonderfully. John also, two days before Pat passed, came to the home from Ohio, played for her, and was able to interact with her. He was the last non-family member to interact with Pat. I want to thank Brett from the Metro Detroit Youth Club. His performance as moderator during the memorial service was exemplary, and he has been a resource for me and for my daughters as we went through this difficult time. I want to thank the speakers who honored Pat. Mayor Fournier as the first, former mayor Ellison, former mayor and CEO Ralph Costelli, our neighbor and friend of 40-plus years, Libby Richards, Pat's sister Gail, and my two daughters. They spoke, all of you spoke, of how important it was to know Pat and how important it was that she provide an example to us as we go forward. I want to thank the members of the general community, those who came to the service and those who couldn't, but who sent their good wishes, their cards, their support. They dropped off food, they dropped off muffins, they dropped off treats, kept us all very sugar high for the entire time. I want to thank the city businesses who participated in the memorial service in one way or another. Sullivan Funeral Directors, Tomatoes Restaurant, Give Thanks Bakery, Lux Event Linen Supplier, and very, very importantly, the farmer's market and its staff, who extended themselves to make this a wonderful service and a wonderful venue for the service. Pat wanted it at the farmer's market, and they came through. I want to thank hospice. You don't thank caregivers in that sense all too often, but they were there for all of us as family members, and they were there for Pat. Finally, I want to thank the members of the city staff, the police, whose Honor Guard did the flag folding, Mr. Brayke and the senior staff for all of their support, and very especially Judy Davids, who put together a beautiful summary of Pat's career here in Royal Oak, and who was there to provide support in every way possible. So thanks to Judy, thanks to the city, thanks to the entire community. I'm thanking you tonight on behalf of myself and my entire family. Kathy tonight is spending time with our granddaughter, helping her with her homework. She got a pretty good-sized homework assignment today. Ann is in DC on behalf of her organization. Sister Gail went back to Minnesota from here and is now in New Mexico doing her job. The grandkids are in school. And we all thank you, thank the community, for all of the support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for those words. I don't know how we go from that to public comment, but we're going to try to migrate there. In case anybody hasn't noticed, and maybe if, Richard, if you're listening, in Pat's spot, Mr. Perush and the family were gracious enough to lend one of Commissioner Perush's scars to place on her chair. That will be there every meeting until the term is finished and done. We just can't say it enough how much we love Pat and how much we miss her, and we're very grateful. Can't imagine how difficult it's been for you, Dave, to come here tonight and say those kind words and thank everybody is pretty remarkable. We're very grateful as a community for that. We're going to move to item seven tonight, which is public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda or not, as that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful, the city commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't worry, there are other ways to reach out to us. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer it to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled on the agenda. Our city manager is also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. If you haven't previously reached out to the city, I highly encourage you to drop off your contact information to our community engagement specialist, Ms. Judy David, so we can follow up with you if you have an urgent matter. All right, with that, who's first? Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Joseph Fisher, 310 West Sixth. We made it through arts beats and eats alive. I only had one parking ticket written to me, and it was to a rental, so we'll see what happens with that. I give the city, I give the police, and not just the Royal Oak Police, but also the Oakland County Sheriff, State Police, all supporting agencies an A+. As far as the event goes, I give it a C-, and the reason I say that is for a couple reasons. I think we need to put an absolute cap on the spread of arts beats and eats any further for the time being, outside of its current zone. Second, I think we need to refocus it more towards art. I feel like the art we've been getting now is kind of box truck art. People go around to shows. It'd be cooler to see more avant-garde stuff from local artists, featuring artists, minority artists, women artists, local artists, have it more focused on things like that. I know the downtown dollars for some retailers, that's been helping, any revenue that's offset by the festival, but I know for a lot of other retailers and businesses, they're taking a pretty hard hit, and I'm hoping there's some way we can make it more equitable for those businesses that are severely affected. For example, the salon on Sixth, I've heard overheard maybe 30K that weekend. Make it more equitable, possibly put the booths in the middle so that the storefronts are more accessible and visible. I know there might be a logistical concern there regarding electricity, but you're talking about strategic aging-in-place sustainability and climate action plans, which is good because I intend on aging in place here, and I would like to see recycling made available, more available to residents in the downtown core. I'd like to see more recycling bins further off of Main Street, more on Washington as well, and further throughout the area. I think there's enough places that are serving food in plastic containers that are out of the recycling bin zone, that a lot of that waste is getting thrown in the trash. I have 25 seconds, so I'd like to say, I really think we should do something with the county possibly regarding a new transit center, if at all possible. I think it's about damn time, and we can name it after Dave, and we can forget about Augustus Woodward, because he probably owned Slaves or something like that. So we erase history, it's about Dave now, so.
All right, who's next? Mr. Sackett?
Good evening. Mark Sackett, General Manager, Royal Oak Leprechauns, 31050 Woodward Avenue. I'm not sure where Pat stood with the Leprechauns. I know she loved the city, I'm sure she loved the city. I love what I'm doing in the city and at Memorial Park, and hopefully this love for the city and everything is going to continue carrying on. At the previous commission meeting, I was pleasantly surprised of the many people, both from Royal Oak and surrounding communities, to support what we're doing at Memorial Park. Since the last meeting, I spent three days in Minnesota, meeting with the leadership from the new league we are looking to join. We learned a lot, and we realized we really need to work on upgrading Memorial Park. I have a proposal I'm going to share with John Fideli and Aaron Filipski that is broken into two areas, some major capital improvement-type things and some smaller improvements that our program will work to cover the cost and leave no burden on the city. All of our improvements are to benefit this park for the city and will bring more people to see and experience Royal Oak. I believe this is a good thing. I also believe that our proposed improvements will continue to grow the game for the youth of Royal Oak, who will then grow into being proud descendants of the local ROSL program. With this potential new league affiliation, I've received a phone call from another one of my former players who played at University of Michigan, even though I'm a Spartan grad, I'll say that, and he also played in the minors for a few years. He wants to get involved. I've also received some support from two other very prominent businessperson, one who's very involved with the Detroit Lions of all things, but he's a former baseball player that I coached when I was at Birmingham Groves. These two people love what we're doing, they love the area, they just see a lot of great potential for it. They want to get involved. So I'm meeting with John Fideli on Wednesday at the park, and I hope to pass our proposal on to you in the weeks to come. We're a nonprofit organization, my books are open. You'll see that my salary's lower than the ones what you're making right here at being a commissioner. There's basically no salary. I do it for the love of it. So there's no financial benefit for me, but there's a huge benefit right here for me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett. All right, who's next? Ms. Wagner?
First, I want to say thank you for the invocation, it was excellent. Really appreciated that. Regarding the number nine on the agenda about sending a postcard out with a URL and a QR code, I'm strongly opposed to this, and the reason being seniors and low-income individuals. I don't know where this idea came from. Siren was, we're paying Siren $150,000 a year to maximize communication efforts, including on topics like taxes. So I'm wondering if they approved this, if they thought this was a good idea, or if it was the city manager's office, when the city manager presented the Aging in Place Plan, which specifically states that one in three Oakland County seniors is digitally illiterate, and people still prefer low-tech options. SEMCOG says that 7.4% of Royal Oak households, not just seniors, do not have an internet subscription. So why should they be made to jump through hoops to get the same information that everybody else does? Not to mention many times when people get postcards, they think they're advertising and they just toss them out, they don't bother to read them. So what is the purpose? Why switch to this? Is it to save money? I can think lots of ways to save money, and this should not be one of them. To the commission, how does this satisfy your strategic goal of equity and inclusion? Frankly, I'd like to say I'm surprised by this proposal, but I'm not. Given the failure to provide more on-street parking, handicap parking in the downtown, forcing people to park in parking structures that were constructed without ADA doors, prioritizing sundowning a committee over creating a new one to implement the Aging in Place Plan, completed nine months ago, I'm not surprised that once again, seniors, and in this case, lower-income households, are being marginalized. I urge the city commission to vote no on this proposal. Stay with the regular plan of sending out a letter to every voter. How much time do I have? All right, I'm on social media a lot, and I regularly get messages from other people that I don't even know, that bring up issues that they've encountered in the city. So someone wrote me and said, I saw, this was regarding fugitive dust. I saw a home being demolished two weeks ago nearby my home, and they didn't even have water available. The warning sign that it is supposed to remain on the fence was no longer posted. The workers pointed to the hose on the reel belonging to the neighbor when I questioned the required wedding. Over the course of three days, I had to go back numerous times, only to find them doing active demolition with the water turned off. I had to call city enforcement twice. After the contractors were approached by the city, they went right back to turning the water off or using the water but not having it reach the actual demolition. The city of Birmingham put into place safeguards independent of the state and federal laws. She's reporting that it's no safer now than it was before, so if you're not aware, this is also going on in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else tonight?
Good evening. Michael Kessler, Best Life Cannabis, 32767 Woodward Avenue. It's a quick recap, I'm the owner of Best Life. I submitted Best Life's application in January of 2021. Best Life was officially awarded its license from the city in June 2022. After completing all city-state CRA inspections, Best Life has officially now opened. Back in 2019, Michigan Cannabis Regulatory Agency, CRA, created the Adult Use Microbusiness License to allow only in-state residents the opportunity to own and operate fully-integrated small business in their local community. As we all know, since 2019 and 2021, a lot has changed in this world, for us and especially business owners. The general cost of living, wages, materials, you name it, almost the cost of everything has risen, except cannabis, due to the saturation of the market currently. At the beginning of 2023, the CRA made several revisions to the rules, licenses, and license fees, to keep up with the times and ensure that as this new market continues to mature and continue to provide an exceptional amount of state tax revenue, that no one is left behind or at a disadvantage. Currently, Best Life is allowed to cultivate 150 cannabis plants, processed cannabis goods, and seller cannabis goods. We are not allowed to bring in any other cannabis goods from any other company. This was the original microbusiness license that the CRA created back in 2019. One of the rule changes the CRA made was with the microbusiness license. The state has offered the microbusiness licensee the opportunity to choose which microbusiness best suits their business needs. They sell the original microbusiness license and have added the option to convert an existing microbusiness license into a microbusiness Class A. A Class A microbusiness license allows a licensee to cultivate up to 300 cannabis plants. Does not allow the licensee to process the cannabis. Those 300 cannabis plants would only be packaged as flour. The licensee is also able to bring in processed goods from other processors in Michigan. Best Life is requesting that the city of Royal Oak take into consideration the transition of Best Life Cannabis microbusiness into a Class A microbusiness. Multiple microbusinesses across the state who chose to make the transition are already operational as Class A microbusinesses. The reason for this transition into a Class A microbusiness license is to create more jobs in our community. We project that Best Life would be able to generate twice as many jobs if we were operating as a Class A. We would also be able to have higher pay for employees, as this would generate more management positions. The Class A license will allow a broader selection of products for our customers and allow us to have more specific medicinal cannabis products that we would not be able to produce as a standard microbusiness. The Class A license will allow Best Life more opportunities, become more active in our community with local events and charities. For this short-time allowance, there are many major benefits in regards to how Class A is better fit for Best Life Cannabis, and I hope the city of Royal Oak can see these benefits for both sides and all of its community members. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Teresa Mullin, and I am the owner of the fern here in Royal Oak, 406 East Forest Street. I am a new small business here. We just celebrated one year, August, this past August, so we made the first-year mark. There's no going back from here, but I wanted to show up today and just let you guys know that... But I wanted to show up today and just let you guys know that I still have no employees, and that is my own fault. I'm very controlling over my business, and I blame that probably on my mother. So I'm here for two reasons today. One is to thank the city commission for the ARPA funding for Arts Beats and Eats. As a small business, that really helps us out when it comes to marketing materials and extra costs. So I deeply appreciate that. And I also wanted to share my input on what an amazing weekend I had at Arts Beats and Eats as a small business. This was our second year at Arts Beats and Eats. Not only did the city support us, but Arts Beats and Eats provided us with a discounted booth space due to The Fern being a small business. I'm not going to be specific on what our bottom line was, but the results were very positive and had a very nice impact on my small business as we head into the winter months. It definitely helps me out, and I'm going to be hiring someone soon. But it was also a chance to promote my location, since we are on the end of East Forest Street over here. We're kind of hidden and kind of in like a little nook there, but if you haven't been, I encourage you to, because we have a really nice patio and some really good drinks, too. So my family supported me on the labor side, and I had a lot of friends and support of our regular customers that come in when it came to this event. And while it was kind of hot the last couple days of Arts Beats and Eats, I found it incredibly beneficial to my small business. I was able to meet a lot of new people, a lot of new customers that I then saw the following week, and they are now regulars now, believe it or not. So I've heard a ton of feedback from my friends and customers, and I'm glad that there's a festival like this, that my small business can participate in. Events like Arts Beats and Eats and Royal Oak Taco Fest are great for promoting and bringing people to downtown, but also, again, directly had a profound positive impact on my business, and I just wanted to share that with you today. So thank you for the ARPA funding, and thank you for allowing a positive festival to come into the city. I know that some may disagree, but as a small business owner who literally has my mom work for me for free, it definitely helps us, and I would like to share some positive light to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on one year.
What's the name of the business again?
The Fern.
The Fern, like the plant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back, in the red.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ethan Friedman, and I represent My Nutrition over on 319 South Main Street. I am also here to express gratitude to the City of Royal Oak, as well as the ARPA funding, and share experiences of a successful weekend at the Arts Beats and Eats Festival. So in the past, we have operated at limited hours over the weekend and have run Labor Day sales, cutting into our margins, just to keep up with the slower external retail climate over those four days. This year, despite some procrastination from my end, we were given ARPA funding and a discounted rate, as well as a prime location on Fourth and Washington, where we set up a booth for our meal prep company that we run on the side. Normally, we prepare those meals in advance, but here, we live-cooked three different menu items, where it was just meat, rice, veggies, seasoned up real nice. And in addition to that, we had some extra hands on deck, and we were able to market the very diverse and new customers that we would not have been able to see elsewhere. In addition to a very successful weekend in revenue, we also managed to make a ton of new prospects. Our pre-orders for the following week was almost double what it normally would have been, just from the patrons that we spoke to at the festival. And we also prospected a lot of customers for our supplement store, that is the brick-and-mortar location in downtown Royal Oak. While, at the same time, we had closed our store location but left a sign on the door, allowing people to call myself or my business partner's phone number if they came by, we walked over to the store and took care of them. And despite that, we still ended up doing pretty well in revenue for the storefront as well. All in all, I just wanted to express gratitude to the City of Royal Oak, to the Arts Beats and Eats staff, and the ARPA funding for what was an ultimately very successful weekend. Thank you, guys. Go Lions.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Going once, going twice. All right. We're going to close public comment and bring the meeting to this side of the table, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening? I'm going to look twice to the left.
It's been years. I don't understand this anymore.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So this brings us to item nine, which is Authorization for Outreach Initiative Renewal of the Road Millage. All right. Mr. Brake, I'm handing it over to you.
Okay. Yep. Good evening, Mayor Corney, and members of the city commission. I'm proposing to you a way of, through brevity, a summarization of not only the road millage, but also both ballot items. So the notion of including a web address and using a QR code is coming from me and this recommendation. With that being said, is that we are still compiling a letter, and we'll make that available to anyone that wishes to receive that. So before sending this off to the printer and presenting this to you, and I appreciate the help that I've received internally, especially in staff with Ms. Judy Davids and others that helped get their input, and some pointers on the way of best conveying the information. So it is critical, as we look at the coming 10 years, to finish off the road paving and construction work, as we're looking at 50 miles of road. And upon the completion of this, assuming that this does pass, at that funding period in that we will be well over 90% of having neighborhoods, as well as major corridors, or sometimes what we refer to as major streets. At the same time, we do allude to information that was initiated by the citizens, not by this commission, but on the ranked choice voting. And the information that's on there and have complete language of the changes that will be made to the city charter. So the language on the ballot is just a limited description, but when you look at the actual wording change to the city charter, there would be information where individuals who want to read those changes, how they can go about to obtain them. So I present that to you. This is a little bit different approach. To get this out, we intend on going to the printer tomorrow to have this printed. But if you so choose to do a letter in addition to that, I'm very mindful of this is information only that we are presenting and do not want any appearance of advocating. So it's presented in a neutral stance, but to what extent, the amount of information and mailers that we have go out is kind of the fundamental question. It isn't so much of a cost savings as it is better use of dollars. So everyone's busy, and to come across quite succinctly what this proposal entails, but yet, for anyone that wants to know what the actual amount that they pay at their property, there's a way of going to the website to obtain that information. Also, what are the proposed prospective streets that we plan on paving? And the demonstration on here, kind of an overview. Someone made that suggestion of having a brief overview map that shows of the intended major streets. And this gives us, if passed, an opportunity to combine funding through state and federal sources and other grant opportunities, where we can leverage considerably local dollars and to achieve the maximum amount of return. So I'm presenting this for your approval, and to carry this out, but whatever ways that you want us to disseminate the letters and anyone that will respond. I'm also providing hard copies at the senior center, at the library, and other places where we have provided. So we will do that. So, but I'll defer to what your wishes are, and staff will carry that out. So if there's any questions that I can answer, or the information about the road millage program, let's see, Ms. Donahue's here and can respond if we want to revisit any of the specifics on that proposal, but for purposes tonight, just looking at the dissemination of communication. So.
Questions to Mr. Brake?
Commissioner Dubak. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brake. I think it's wise to use all the tools at our disposal to make sure our residents have all the information necessary to make an informed decision on something like this. So we are still thinking we will send a letter in addition to this, or this is in lieu of a letter?
This is in lieu of a letter, but if you wish to have both mailers, then we will make it happen.
I think it could be wise to do both. I very much appreciate the QR code and the opportunity to dig into more detail digitally, so that we're using all the tools and all the ways that people prefer to receive communication. But I agree that there are some residents who prefer the information in paper. I think the card has great value for a lot of residents, but I do want to make sure everyone has the information at hand.
Okay.
So that's in the cards. I know it's an additional expense, but I think, especially given that, you know, there is an organized disinformation campaign, once again, about this particular proposal, it's important that we should provide hard-cold facts about what this is, and that everyone has access to them. That being said, with the card we're looking at right now, are we still, as far as like minor edits and things, you want to do that now, or do you want to do it later? I approve, I'm supportive of the card. There's a couple of small changes out there.
We can make those on the fly. So I would say, why not, after the meeting, get with me, and that's still timely. The letter, there's going to be probably a day lag in that, but we're pretty much done. So the overall look, I gave a copy of that to you, but there could be some tweaks that we made to that. But as far as the postcard, it's still appropriate. So before it, as they say, it hits the presses.
Yeah, I think it's just about there, as far as hitting on the top-line points, just a couple of formatting changes.
Okay, sure. No, and I appreciate the input.
Yeah. But I think it's a valuable tool, and I think it's important to our residents to have some factual information before they're looking at their ballot.
We'll go with Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, I had the same question as Commissioner Dubak, because I had understood, I had understood that it was an either-or. So the fact that this is happening in the question, and I think I feel the same way, that the letter adds additional value to it. And one of the, some concern I have about this is that it looks a lot like campaign literature, and, you know, not just for that, but also that it might go straight into the trash. So I worry about, like, a letter from the city is something that people are more likely, I think, to read. And I also worry just a little bit, I think, I think the language is good, I'm happy with it, but it, you know, we've already heard some confusion about, especially the administrative petition, and whether or not that's from us or who that's from. And there's, you're able to give more detail and kind of explain it better in the letter. So I, with Commissioner Dubak, I think this is pretty, but I would maybe do both.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Dubak and Commissioner Macy. I think doing both is great. We're using the tools that we have to wily communicate with our residents, getting all this information out there. Thank you, Mr. Brake, for, I know initially, the idea might have been to go with one or the other. I like that there was a letter produced. I appreciate it. With, you know, we don't have to, like, go through this, I just think, when the letter does go out, I think having the Royal Oak header, letterhead would be beneficial.
Oh, well, this is a draft, so.
Okay, perfect. And it has in the text. A Royal Oak envelope, also. I think it'd be good, so they don't end up in the recycling, as Commissioner Macy said.
Yeah, I'll just say that, with someone at public comment talked, that the letter is probably a better option, and I don't disagree. I think we should send the letter in addition, because there are folks that will actually read this and not the letter, because this is brief. You know, people, you know, have three kids, you know, they're moving 100 miles an hour, and, you know, they know an election's coming around, they know something's on the ballot, and now they can say, oh, I have an understanding of what it is, I'm going to set it here, and then click on that, if they're tech-savvy to do it. I think some people that would normally do that might recycle this right away, along with pizza coupons, whatever it may be. And then if they get a letter in the mail following it, then it's a second opportunity to touch those people, so they're informed, because it is their decision. It's not our decision, it's the voter's decision what they want to do with these proposals. So I think it gives us a little extra coverage, it gives us a couple modes of medium to communicate with people that might not all be on the same page, and everyone's on social media, either because they're tech-savvy or because they know it's often accessible. Personal opinion, sorry. But on that, would we be having any sort of, like, on our website, we'll have these, or at least the letter, available, and then we'll also, I imagine, email folks on our normal email distribution list that choose to be informed by the city? And then I imagine also, city posts on our different social media pages to let people know, hey, here's a link if you're interested in the road millage and learning more about it, oh, and the ranked choice voting, you know, come take a look at this basic factual information, so before you get into the ballot box, you know what you're looking at.
So with that being said, so the web address there of learn more.
Okay.
That will go directly to the letter, and that's fine. We'll do both. And for that matter, I think having hard copies in addition to those mailed, having that at the library and the senior center, we'll have those there. So, but again, I'm leaving that to your discretion, and so it's, we have both prepared. It's the letter, we want to make a few more edits to it, you know, before this thing goes out, including having the official presentation. So this is the, will be the third letter, since I've been here, that we have disseminated information on, you know, previously on campaign efforts. And so it does go out in the Royal Oak envelope, and so, and I would agree with you, people receive information differently, so, and respond to that. So, point well taken. But I think having the summary and someone that does want to delve into, and there's a considerable amount of webpages, like I said, so anyone that wants to know specific to their property, there is a calculator that's in there that you can put in your address, and it'll show, what is this two-and-a-half mils? What is the first year of this levy? Then addition of the 10-year plan from 2025 to 2034, am I saying those years right? Yes. And it shows year by year that the projected roads that we intend to reconstruct, repave, again, focusing mainly on, and I don't want to get caught up in too much of the technical, but what we commonly refer to major streets. So for most people, it's the roads that we take to go to work, or to worship, or groceries, or the major thoroughfares, that we're really concentrating on that. With that being said, there are some neighborhoods that have been identified, and those streets will be listed, if someone's wondering, when is my street going to be repaved? And so, and I'll give some guidance on that. But that's, part of that will be determined on a year-by-year basis, so it may not have the exact information at this point. So it is a projection. Costs do increase as materials and labor associated with that. So that's kind of my only word of caution out there, if, you know.
The plan.
Yeah. The plan comes about, and, you know, 2031 rolls around, says, hey, I understand that the street that I normally go to work was supposed to be repaved. And engineering department does an excellent job of keeping individuals informed of construction activities and leading up to bidding out projects, so that the communication process is ever continuing on that basis. But, so, we're, again, we're happy to do both. It's, they're set in motion, the backup information is set on the webpage, and will be ready to be viewed by anyone that wants to know the specific details that I've mentioned. So, again, thanks to the staff and engineering for all their work, and Ms. Donahue and her staff to put together these projections of where they would intend in the given years, in the best-case scenario, where we intend to carry out these improvements. So.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make mention of the actual postcard itself. This isn't. This isn't groundbreaking technology we're using here, voter contact method effect. We got the idea from the schools who did this last year with their Road Village.
That's right.
They sent out numerous postcards. It's an effective way of communication. So, once again, kind of leaning on our partners and another local unit of government to see what works and how to communicate with residents.
So, I imagine there's a couple motions on the table, but one of them included, you know, obviously this is staff discretion about the content, but, you know, whatever motion is made, if we go with this postcard, you know, obviously it would be pending any additional inputs from anyone that wants to give it to our city manager before it goes out, but at his final discretion to, in final authority, obviously you would run it by everyone that you need to run it by from the state and everything like that to make sure it's unbiased and it's not, you know, advantageous or anything.
Correct, right.
And, you know, our city attorney would take an opportunity to look at it, but any additional input we have, we could provide to him tonight, small little tweaks, whatever it may be, and then he could move forward. Commissioner Collo?
Okay, so along that end, I move that we prepare and mail out both the postcard option and the letter option as presented in the resolutions before us.
The motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas? Discussion on the motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. That brings us to item number 10, which is reconnecting communities program, 11 Mile Road.
Okay. This, I'm presenting this for your consideration, but if there's specific questions that could be answered, we visited this topic this past fall of partnering with our neighboring communities through a planning grant to conduct some continuity along this important corridor. This corridor in our neighboring communities connects to nearby schools in Royal Oak and makes the connection to two important nonprofit organizations, which is the YMCA as well as the Detroit Metro Youth Club, in better close proximity. The idea is to encourage multi-modal transportation. The design elements of 11 Mile are not decided. There's been discussion about that at the traffic committee, and that will come at a later time. So, what's different this time around is that we have even a greater number of partners that are coming forward, which includes Madison Heights, 11 Mile to go the entire distance in that community and a small portion in the city of Southfield. So, we have greater number of communities that are coming forward and tells a compelling story. This aligns nicely with the S-CAP, especially as we promote non-motorized transportation and make it safer for individuals to traverse. Over the last six years, we've documented that there has been six or seven either pedestrian or bicycle accidents that have occurred on the street. And if there's a way that we can minimize or entirely eliminate that from happening, would make this a safer corridor for someone to traverse. So, there are approximately 39,000 people that work in Royal Oak, and not all of them live here. And so, we have individuals that commute from nearby communities, and if this makes it safer for people to get to their place of work and help them in doing so, it's that much better. So, looking at authorization to submit this, our neighboring communities are doing the same thing at their meetings of authorizing the staff to submit this grant. We're hoping now that we'll have a stronger presentation. Our new grants writer, grant coordinator, Jill Martin, has been working actively with the, part of this collaborative effort, and her kind of energy and ideas, I have even greater optimism that we will have a successful grant program. So, the planning grant will offset the cost, there will be a local match that will be associated with that. This will help us to compile the construction documents to bid this out across these jurisdictions. Regardless of this program as mentioned, we do have in the CIP, it's several years out, but we do have a call for making not only the repaving this area, but also placemaking opportunities that will make a better presentations as someone is coming off of I-75 and entering into our community and make that much more inviting. So, there's many different elements that will just help our community as well as our neighboring communities working together to widely make this a transformational change in this region. And if there's ways that we can be leaders of helping to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by promoting non-motorized transportation, that's all the better. So, this presented for your consideration, but if there's technical questions pertaining to 11 Mile, Ms. Donahue is here to answer those questions, but we'd like to, your authorization to submit this grant with the application deadline coming up at the end of this month. So, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Breck, just a couple high level reviews here, I just want to make sure we're clearing a few things. So, one is, the plan is in general to probably redo 11 Mile at some point in about five years or so, depending on funding and when revenues might be available for that.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, because we decided 11 Mile is kind of beyond the point where it definitely needs to be repaired at this point. And then this in no way binds us to any sort of design feature, anything at all, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so all we're doing here tonight is saying, hey, our neighbors are looking at this, there's potential to pull down federal funds so that the Royal Oak taxpayer pays a little bit less for 11 Mile, and maybe we could talk and work about this as a region?
That is a definite possibility, and as far as having other amenities, it would certainly increase the probability of a lesser cost. So, if there's, you know, pedestrian-friendly refuse islands, bump outs, whatever they happen to be, but you are correct, none of those design elements, they will not be decided by anyone else other than this body.
Okay, so we have a lot of time to look at this. This is just step one, this is an administrative task, is applying for a grant to see if we can try to pull down some funds.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds easy. Thanks.
Commissioner Hunt? Oh, he got it? We'll go with Commissioner Dubb.
No, I think Commissioner Collo's question about covered it, just that this is giving us the opportunity to explore what's possible.
Yes.
Okay. And what's possible is really better collaboration with our neighbors to get the highest and best use out of this all the right way.
Absolutely.
Okay. I can, I'll add to that, that when I was first, when I first ran for office in 11, and one of the top things on people's minds was a little more attention paid to our other commercial corridors. And 11 Mile was always top mind for people, like what can we do with 11 Mile to make it more pedestrian and business and resident friendly as right now it is. Not necessarily fertile ground for those things, as I, I live at Porter and 11 Mile, and I'm often seeing like families rushing across it with strollers, you know, to get across, because there's no crosswalks for, you know, a half mile at a time. So, I think opening the door to that conversation is probably a very prudent thing to do. With, you know, the fact that there is no plan on the table, this is giving us the opportunity to have a conversation about the highest and best use of this space. There's obviously chatter in the community about there being a plan. There is no plan. This is the beginning, to the beginning, to the beginning of the conversation of maybe having a plan for what we might do differently.
Correct.
And I can see no reason not to enthusiastically support that.
Okay. One other thing I would be remiss if I did not add, so let's assume that we do get the planning grant. A lot of public outreach is part of this, and that part is important to receive that input from all different stakeholders. Like you said, the individuals that are pushing strollers, the small business people that want more of a neighborhood type of business as opposed to maintaining high rate of speed, quite frankly, what it is. And what I've said before is designing cities around people, not cars. So, how do you translate that into that specific plan? That will be determined, but there will be plenty of opportunities. So, so you're right, I do want to emphasize that it's not a preconceived of the, whatever these elements that are out there. And so, and to have that universal look that goes across boundaries of having consistency, I think will just bolster the region to an even higher degree of having that consistency in a much more inviting environment.
Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. As one who lives on 11 Mile and crosses 11 Mile many, many times, and has a first, a bird's eye view or worm's eye view of the condition of the pavement, it can't happen too soon. But also, as one who's involved, has long been committed to regional cooperation, I serve on SEMCOM's executive committee, I'm delighted to see South Oakland communities coming together in this way to create a benefit to the public that spans multiple parts of South Oakland County. I think it's a great, a great plan, and I suppose, as I say that, I will move approval of the resolution.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion? I'll just add that the big thing, Commissioner Douglas said it, I mean, it's the cooperation with the cities, our neighbors that are all along this corridor to make sure that we have consistency. People don't, you know, that are driving down 11 Mile, going to work or leaving from Royal Oak and going to Morin or going to Southfield, wherever they're going, traffic goes, you know, in both directions. You know, working together as a, as a team to ensure that, you know, the right traffic and right design throughout that corridor among the cities is, you know, fluid and solid and meets the goals of every community, and I think it's a great idea. We would be doing it anyways, I would think. It's probably a good practice anyhow without the grant opportunity, but I'm glad the grant has motivated us to work a little closer together to offset the cost of the much-needed repaving of 11 Mile Road because certainly there's some bumps out there that need to be fixed, and we've worked really hard to keep it alive, but, you know, it's in the plan and we'll plan to plan with this. All right, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Ms. Donahue, thank you so much, appreciate it. Wonderful.
Great presentation.
Tell your family we're sorry we kept you here. All right. That brings us to item 11, which is the fugitive dust discussion. I think, who's going to open this one up?
Well, I can kick off. That's, so, there has been some discussion from my stand at the Environmental Advisory Board about this topic. There's been a thread of emails going back and forth of looking at having a different level of control and looking at communities nearby that they have a little bit different approach. So, Mr. Grochowski has done an excellent job of kind of outlining where the authority exists, but at the same time invited Mr. Craig here to answer what the current practices, there are ordinances in place, but begin this discussion if we do want to have another layer of regulation, but the tools are currently out there. But unfortunately, federal and state law preempts us in certain instances because single and two-family structures are exempt that preempt local control in that regard. If there's another layer of regulations that pertain to asbestos and lead contaminations as there's other regulatory agencies that have direct oversight. But just the same, this is, I think, a good time to revisit this topic and to have better understanding, and if there's some direction that we need to carry forward, and we'll do so, but we'll turn that over to the subject experts, the legal side as well as the administrative side of things who certainly knows the ordinance and hopefully answer any questions or concerns that you have, so.
Mr. Grochowski.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to take credit for most of the memo that I drafted. Somebody much wiser than me of this organization, an environmental law attorney, knowing that this commission has visited this issue before, I didn't want to reinvent the wheel, and was able to locate two very clear and concise emails written by an environmental law attorney, I think that sets it out pretty plainly. Doesn't mean that the commission isn't able to explore other options to combat fugitive dust or any other items that may come up during a demolition. Cited the ordinance that we use to require certain abatement activities for fugitive dust, but certainly if there's a further discussion with what the commission would like to see or thinks we can enact further to mitigate those construction or demolition activities, certainly happy to institute anything that you may deem appropriate. And Mr. Craig, your building official is much more intimate with those, knowledgeable with the workings and anything else that, specifics that the commission may have. So, I'll leave it to Mr. Craig to answer any specific questions you may have.
Questions to start. We'll go with Commissioner Hunt.
So, I know that there are other communities, like Manager Breck indicated, like City of Detroit and Dearborn recently implemented fugitive dust ordinances that not necessarily deal specifically with asbestos and lead, but like peat coat and, peat coke and other substances such as that, that may fly off trucks or be a part of other building materials. Is that anything that we could work into some sort of ordinance to attempt to abate or?
Mr. Mayor, did I hear you correctly say like some stuff that would fly off trucks in the transfer process?
Well, that's not just that, but in the process of bringing in, you know, building and demolishing.
Well, I do know from a transportation standpoint, that's all regulated by DOT. Those regulations, we touch on those briefly in the memo regarding their disposal, but DOT regulates a safe transportation of those materials to and from any site requiring they be secured from, from escape from those conveyances, whether it's actually happens or not. So, DOT in many regards will also preempt the city from the transportation requirements. But again, it doesn't mean we can't, we have a fugitive dust ordinance, doesn't mean we can't look to various tools to try to strengthen those areas outside of what were preempted from specifically looking at, like addressing lead and the asbestos, doesn't mean we can't address the general activities. I can't say that I've looked at Detroit's and Dearborn's ordinances. I know Detroit's is somewhat unique when it comes to this level of housing, because keep in mind, we're talking about four units or less are exempted from those requirements. So, when you're talking about the demolition of a housing unit that's four units or less, I know Detroit's a little bit unique because a lot of their regulations apply to homes they own through the HUD homes. So, it's a little different because the city can do what they want with their own property as far as demolition is concerned. But again, certainly happy to consider all avenues, and if there's other cities that you think could give us fair examples of what we should be doing, happy to take a look and bring that back for your consideration.
And I'm sure there is, and Dearborn's extend to private ownership as well, so it's sort of all encompassing. All right, but thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
So, I somehow feel that Commissioner Perush is still with us. So, we see that section 278-3070 of the city ordinances requires, you know, steps to take to mitigate dust, that signage is required, et cetera. And my question is, or else what? That is, are there penalties that come with violating the conditions that we've specified here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
I believe violations, and Mr. Craig can probably correct me if I'm wrong, would be a ticketable offense, but I believe it's just a civil infraction, wouldn't be a misdemeanor for violation of this. for violation of this particular section, so it would be on the lower scale of criminal, possible criminal penalties. That's something the commission could certainly look at changing as far as penalizing wise, if you desire to increase the potential penalty for violation of that section from making it a civil infraction to a misdemeanor, if you so choose. You're certainly able to do that if you'd like. And, and Mr. Craig, if I'm wrong, it is a civil infraction, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, how do we know? I mean, as a citizen, it says, you know, to report violations, contact the building department. I mean, do we, does someone dash out there immediately to spot whether or not they're pouring water on it? I mean, are we on top of that?
So, you don't have to pour water on a demolition. You have to contain the dust. That's, that's what the ordinance says. Excuse me. So, as long as the dust is contained, there is no violation. When we go out? We do go out and respond to those complaints. I've had roughly five of them since we've started with the signs. We have 10 demos since we've been using the signs in mid-June. Five of those I've gotten complaints on. We ask them to put water on it, even though they're not legally compelled to, and they have, so that's where we've left it with them.
Well, because it says, "Use of water spray as dust control is all caps required during demolition activities."
That's not the ordinance. That is a sign that was produced by DPS on behalf of a board that advises the commission.
Ah, okay, so, because the ordinance says...
Could include water, is what you're looking for, I think.
Got it, right. Well, so how do we know dust is flying? I mean, obviously, if it's super dusty, I mean, you're gonna see it flying, but like, how do we, you know, this seems arbitrary. Are there ways that we can make this a little more finite?
Not that I'm aware of.
You know, I mean, if I'm, I'm the mom of the house, you know, if I live next door and I'm a mom and I've got kids, you know, how do I know when to keep my kids from playing in the backyard? I mean, or what risks they're exposed to?
Close the windows, yeah.
I just, it, it seems like, I mean, we could find a way to put some teeth into this. I mean, I acknowledge the fact that federal and state laws preempt this and that it's only about, you know, their rules are only about larger constructions, but here we have an ordinance that I feel like maybe we could put some more teeth into.
We'll go with Commissioner Kolo, Commissioner Macy, and then Commissioner Duba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just kind of explore these five, five demos too, so the five complaints you have. Like, what's happened when you've had a complaint? What's, what's the process?
When we get the complaint, we go out, we ask the contractor to put water on it. A couple of them have had water available and they're spraying it, it's just not to the satisfaction of the person complaining. It's maybe like a garden hose set up and locked in place and spraying. So, we advise them if they're not using water to please use water, although we can't compel them to.
Okay, and when you say you go out, like, if I call, now, 2:30 in the afternoon and someone is, the house next to me is being demoed, and I call the building department and make a complaint, like, when does someone show up?
15 minutes? 10 minutes?
Okay, so it's like dispatch, you're dispatching someone who's in the field already, they're coming to see this active and live demo going on.
Right. That's why we added the police number to the signs as well, because, so this, this, if you look at where this comes from, it's disorderly conduct, or it is where it comes from. It's tied in with all disorderly conduct, and it's enforceable by the building department and the police department. So, if it were after hours or a weekend when we're not here, police could be called and they could respond the same way.
And if someone didn't respond, I know we talked about, like, there's the ticket, but would they also, could you issue a stop work order also to stop all work on the property?
Not, not as a violation to an ordinance, we couldn't issue a stop work.
Oh, interesting, okay. And then, I guess, one, you know, I think there's been some confusion with this, at least with the AAB, I know what they're trying to accomplish, but at least, the ordinance does say that dust can't leave the site. So, there is a plume of dust, that's, that's not, no matter if they're using chemicals, mechanical, or water, dust can't leave the site, right?
Correct. If it does, it would be a violation in any construction site, not just a demolition.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Macy?
Yeah, I think I just have a follow-on question on that. So, you said, you know, if you're, if they're not using water, you can't force them to use water, but if they're not using water, are you forcing them to, like, are they using something? Because it says, "Such steps could include water, blah, blah, blah," but it says, "All necessary steps shall be taken," so it seems like they have to be doing something, right?
If there's visible signs of dust leaving the site, that's when they have to, they're compelled to contain the dust, using one of these methods.
Okay. But does it happen that you show up, they're not using water, and they're, they're using something else, or, I just was confused by that part of the...
Not that I have seen. Again, this, this is for all construction. This isn't, this ordinance was not just geared for demolitions. This ordinance was written a long time ago to deal with all dust coming off of all construction sites.
But essentially, to the extent that anyone is doing this at all, it's with water?
That's the most common method is with water. It could be contained in other ways. Like, the biggest complaint I've gotten about this prior to demolitions were two things that don't require a permit. When somebody's cutting concrete, that does not require a permit, and that emits a tremendous amount of dust. When somebody's doing landscaping, they're cutting landscaping blocks, that emits a tremendous amount of dust. And those don't require permits, so we don't even know they're doing it until we get a complaint. So, we're trying to preempt some of that with the signage and say, "You need to be aware that you have to contain your dust, be, be ready to use some method to do that." Water is the most effective.
Okay. So, if, in that example about the cement cutting, because I've heard about that happening before, so, they don't have to get a permit, but they still are supposed to be containing the dust, right? So, if you get called, you still go and say, "I don't care if you have a permit or not, you still have to be containing your dust."
Correct, yes. Calcium chloride would be another method if it was a dusty site. They sometimes spray it with calcium chloride to help hold the dust down, it doesn't evaporate as quickly as water.
And then, I guess our question, my question for Mr. Grochowski is, so, right now, it says, "At all times, the necessary steps shall be taken to ensure they shall cover airborne. It could include water, chemical treatment, or other ground cover treatment." Is there something stopping us from modifying this to say, "At all times, the necessary steps shall be taken to ensure that blah, blah, blah," which must include at least water?
Or shall include...
And shall include water, or unless previously cleared with the building, the building official, a different method?
Yeah. I don't see any, unless Mr. Craig sees any problem with that. I mean, obviously, you can change, I have that highlighted right here, that you mentioned that, that you could change that word "could" to "shall," and maybe expand that if, you know, depending on the circumstances, add a caveat or a catch-all, or any other method that the building department or the building official deems appropriate to combat or stop the dust from escaping a construction or demolition site. So, I certainly think that was, that is a potential option we could look at.
Mr. Craig, would that be something, would it be helpful? It seems like it would be helpful for you to be able to say, "Look, you gotta use water, it says it right here."
If, if it says, "You must use water at all times during a demolition," then, then that's what we would enforce, regardless of if the dust is, is leaving the site or not. Again, this does not cover a demolition specifically, so that, that language would have to be added to cover demolition specifically.
I guess I'm not suggesting that we change the, the condition, like, why, wouldn't you have to be using it, just that you do have to be using water in this condition? So, wouldn't, wouldn't just be all the time during construction?
So, the, the condition is when dust is leaving the site. And that's the thing, we get there, there's no dust leaving the site, so, again, if you follow the logic on it, there's no requirement to use water because dust isn't leaving the site. If you, if it is the desire of the commission to have water used all the time regardless if dust is leaving the site, then that would need to be added into the, into the language of your...
I guess now I'm confused. So, that, I don't, I don't think that's what we're saying. I think we're, it sounds like, it sounded to me like, you know, there's someone's complaints about the dust, you guys rush over there pretty quickly, I guess I'd be surprised if there weren't still dust rising at that.
There isn't. They're, they're probably responding more to the wordage, to the language on the sign that says, "A continuous water spray must be used at all times," which is not enforceable because it's not in the ordinance. It's simply language on a sign.
Why is it on a sign?
It is confusing, I'm sorry.
Let somebody else go, I'm confused now.
Yeah, so, so what I hear, sorry, Commissioner Buck, one second. What I hear is that in the ordinance, it says, "Hey, when dust is present and blooming and all of this, you have to make sure that it stays on property." And there's lots of tools at your disposal, one of which is water that you can use and recommend it.
Yes.
The sign says, "You must use water." So, if it's a rainy day, or it just rained, and there's no dust coming from the demolition or the construction project, then they would not have to use water because the, the thing that's triggering the requirement is not present, which is the dust leaving the property, or the potential of the dust to leave the property. And so, the other element we have is there's a difference between demolitions and construction. Construction, calcium chloride, you're there for a long time, you're moving dirt around, you know, you look at the big construction sites, that you see you're cutting lots of concrete or whatever it may be. You may even have, you know, big, huge HVAC systems, depending on what you're doing, you're sanding floors, you're doing whatever. But that's different than a lot of the, the things with demolition, which are, I don't want to say haphazard, isn't the word I'm looking for, but it's a much different process to put a drive-in than to knock a house down.
Yeah, you crush it into the basement and haul it away.
That's right.
Yeah.
And so, that, and then there's all these horrible things that, you know, we thought were so great, "Ooh, asbestos, it's great insulation, let's use that." And so, to me, there's a, an angle here where we could treat demolition different than the rest of construction, because you haven't had any real complaints on construction, from what I understand, you had 10 complaints on, or 10, five complaints on 10 demos.
Yes.
Since we've been using the signs.
Now, we've done many demos every year and rarely get complaints to do with dust. Most of it is, "Their truck is blocking my street, the, the music's too loud," stuff like that. That's a typical complaint of what we've gotten for demolitions over the last 17 years that I've been here. Very rarely, I, I don't recall any where I've gotten somebody complaining, saying that the dust and the dirt leaving this demolition site is a problem and needs to be contained.
So, your hypothesis is, the one variable is the sign that says, "Use water." Like, like in a park, if it said, "Keep your dog on a leash," and someone's letting their park, their dog run around, it's like, "Hey, you're, you're violating this," and it may be a dog park, given an inadvertent sign.
Yeah, I don't think it's a coincidence that we've gotten five complaints on this since we've been using the, the signs in mid-June.
Okay. Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the way it works right now, I think the logic's a little backwards, where the dust has to be leaving the site before it would trigger enforcement, because that means the harm is being done before we institute a fix. And to me, it's kind of reminiscent of the conversation way years ago about fencing, right? Around construction sites, we used to have nothing, and we had a lot of conversation around what's our rights, what's good for the neighborhood, and where Orlando was really, our residents are pretty patient with, with a lot of construction, with rebuilds and re-mods and tear downs and things, and our goal should really be to minimize any inconvenience or negative impact on our residents if this is gonna continue, which, which it clearly is. So, to Commissioner Macy's point, I think it'd be better if it's just a status quo when they apply for a demo permit, which they, they do have to apply for a permit.
Yes.
Where they identify their means of dust remediation, and then it's just expected that they're gonna use that method. So, if the method's listed here, they choose one, and then upon inspection, we determine whether or not they're using it, not whether or not the harm's already being done, because you can't put that genie back in the bottle, right? And I understand it might seem like overkill from your point of view, but if of 20 sites, there is one site that has dangerous particles that are impacting its neighbors, I'm more than happy to put the burden on, on the builder, who's gonna be more than adequately compensated for what they're doing here in Ryland, to take that extra precaution. And I don't think it does any harm to our local economy, or it's, it's only a good thing that we're, we're going above and beyond to protect our residents and the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So, to the, the extent that this says, "The city commission may certainly examine and discuss other lawful enforcement mechanisms and ordinance amendments, should they believe that there is additional legally permissible safeguards." I'll leave that to you, telling them it's legally permissible, but to the conversation you're having with Commissioner Macy, if we're gonna say, "You must use one of these methods, and you must identify it on your demo permit," I think that is an enhancement that people will appreciate. And it will clear up the, the sign confusion and give you and your team clarity on what they need to be enforcing.
And also on that, they have to put their demo permit, post it on the construction site, Mr. Craig?
The permit itself isn't posted, the, the sign is posted on the, on the fence. Again, back, back to the original ordinance of fencing the construction sites, all demolitions are required to have that fence, we inspect that fence, and we make sure that that sign is there as part of that, before they get an approval and before they are issued their demolition permit.
Okay. Mayor, from that, and I wanna go down rattles, tell me if this apples and oranges, but you mentioned how this isn't just about demo, but dust remediation on any active construction site, right? So, if someone's dug out a basement and they have a pile of dirt, does that fall under this ordinance? Like, making sure that that pile is not pluming into the air or running into our sewers?
It does, yes, if it's a construction site, then, then it would fall under the guidelines of this ordinance for, there's another part in here that talks about hours of construction. Same thing, if it's, if it's part of construction, it talks about the hours that they can do it, then yes, it would be, fall under that guideline. So, a pile of dirt, digging a basement, yes, would, would fall into that as well.
I feel like more often than not, at least in my neighborhood, if they dig out a basement, there's no tarp or anything pinning down that dirt, and inevitably, we have a rainstorm, and inevitably, there's a river of mud running into our sewers, which we know is very concerning to our residents. And I'm wondering, is that something we need to toughen up here too?
That would fall, I would, I would say, probably under the soil erosion control, which is a county function, and the engineering department could probably speak more intelligently about that.
Okay.
But I know that has come up in, in some discussion in the past, yes.
I don't want to complicate the issue at hand, but I think it's something we need to visit, revisit, as we talk about making sure we're putting the water back in the ground and getting it away from basements like it belongs, I mean, that's another issue. But for this, have they put some teeth into that, making them choose one of these methods upon requesting their demo permit and enforcing that they're actually doing it, so residents don't have to be policing it, but it's just part of our process. Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Buck. I just, one question do you have, though, is, do we differentiate in the permit process if we're doing an interior demolition only? I mean, does this only apply to exterior demo, but, or if I'm doing a drywall job in my house, and, I mean, you put new drywall and you, you finish and you mud it, there is, there are clouds all over the place inside the house, and the dust eventually settles on the floor of the house, but I just want to make sure we, as we're doing this, we're mindful, we're doing this for exterior demolitions and dust that would go exterior, right, and not, I mean, to wet down, like, let's say I choose water, to spray down my drywall with water, right, when I'm doing this, like, I think, so I think as we're writing this ordinance, we're rewriting, making sure that it is applicable to exterior demolitions and we're not causing it, you know, not causing an issue.
I think that's probably where that statement comes in. If it's starting to, you know, go away from the property, then that's what triggers it. But there's also a challenge in that, like, as you said, well, then the genie's out of the bottle. So, I think that their remediation plan in that is they could say, "This is an interior remediation, we're gonna keep the windows closed and let the dust settle, and that is our plan for that demo."
Correct. In that example, if you had all your windows open on the day you were sanding the drywall on a new house, and we could visibly see that leaving the site, we would tell them they are in violation of this ordinance, the way it's written right now, and they need to come up with a, a method to, to stop that. Now, if their method is closing the windows, it gets back to the multiple ways to solve the problem, then the problem's solved and the dust isn't leaving the site anymore.
Mm-hmm.
We close it out.
I had some sawed concrete in the basement many years ago, putting in a new sewer line, and I had some choice words. I came home and was like, "Oh, my God, oh, my God, everything is covered in an inch of dust."
It's very fine dust, too, it's hard.
Oh, man, I was cleaning it forever. And now I know why my wife, in her wisdom, took the baby at the time and went to go see her parents. A lot of work. Okay, so, I feel like there's a little bit of, I don't know that we need to pass a motion here, this was a discussion. I feel like everyone's nodding their head, like we have some direction for Mr. Grochowski to go back and kind of say, "Okay, well, let's maybe button this up, tighten this up a little bit." The other thing I might look at is that sign, and maybe that sign is, you know, puts their, you know, they can handwrite their dust remediation versus saying it's water? I, I don't know. I saw some interesting signs when I was in Toronto last, that, I almost snapped the picture and sent it this way, but it said danger zone because of, and then they had to write why it was, you know, falling objects, or, you know, there were some funny ones that people wrote in there that are probably, I won't mention here, but, but maybe there's something we can do with the sign there too, not to get, because we don't want to send people out on... we don't want to send people out on goose chases. We only want to use our resources when there is a violation.
Should we still use the same sign then until we amend this?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think it's fine, it brings additional clarity and, you know, it doesn't, it's not going to, it's burdensome, but there's been five out of 10. Okay, if we have another one or two, we learn, you know, people in the field get called, they learn a little bit more, have a little bit more advice for us, it's not going to hurt. But I think getting clarity on that sign's also important, too.
Responding to a complaint's never a burden, though we don't mind, because sometimes there might be something else to do. No, we tell them, hey, this is okay, but don't do that. That happens, too.
Yeah, where's your fence? You had it here last week.
Yeah, why is your fence broken down? Oh, before you, yeah, that's actually quite common, is they demo the fence while they're demoing the house, and we have to tell them...
There's a whole quiet show fence industry going on.
Yeah, some of those fences have been up more than one time through the process. Yeah, that's a common thing.
Oh, that's funny.
Yes.
People are clever. But even for the health of their own workers and everything like that, you think you'd want to do a good job remediating things.
Mm-hmm. All right. Anybody got anything else for tonight? Okay, I think that brings us to the end. If someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, a motion by Commissioner Dubon, is there a second? Taken by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on this critical motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Adjourned.